I'd like to call the meeting together of the Board of Trustees for the School District of the City of Dearborn, the regular meeting, Monday, December 10th, 2018, 7 o'clock. First item, please.
Roll call. Usain Barry here, Fadwa Hamud.
Here.
Mary Lane.
Here.
Mary Petrikoff.
Here.
James Thorpe.
Here.
President Meade.
Here. Next item, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag. Ms. Lamise Roar, Principal of Gear Park Elementary School, will introduce students who will lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can I introduce our young ones here?
Please.
First, congratulations to Trustee Thorpe and Trustee Lane on your reelection. She...
Yeah, she's hiding.
So I'd like to introduce Madison Howell, who's a second grader at Gear Park, and Zane Mushainish, who is a kindergartner at Gear Park. And they were chosen because they are both recipients of Student of the Month in November. So they made the running, so here they are.
Congratulations. Nice to have you here.
Go ahead.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I have... Thank you notes for Madison and Zane. Thank you very much for your service. Appreciate it.
Good job.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
You, you board member oath of office. Board Member Mary Lane will take the oath of office at this time, administered by Christine Cipperly. Christine Cipperly and Mary Lane will stand and with their right hands raised. Christine Cipperly will ask her to repeat after her the following oath of office. I don't have to read the oath.
No, you don't.
No. And I also asked if Union Leader Al Lirini might also assist.
Nice.
Repeat after me. I do hereby swear and affirm, I do hereby swear and affirm, I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of office of trustee.
Of office of trustee.
Of the school district of the City of Dearborn.
Of, of, of the school district of the City of Dearborn.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
In the manner provided by law.
In the manner provided by law.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations, Ms. Lane, Trustee Lane.
Thank you, Dr. Meade.
Uh, next item, please.
Congratulations, Trustee Lane. Next item, superintendent's update. First item is agenda items.
I'm just gonna have David Mustin come up, and I want to apologize, I am fighting a cold, so my voice is not the same today, but he's gonna talk about the election and what's going on, and again, congratulations to Trustee Lane, Trustee Thorpe, and Trustee McDonald, who will start next month.
Thank you, Superintendent and Board Members. So, um, we did issue a press release the other day about, um, what occurred over the election cycle here, and we just wanted to take a minute, because this is a little bit out of the ordinary of, of what occurred during this last election's, uh, cycle. So I'm going to attempt to explain this step by step, very slowly, so that I don't get lost and confused. So what had happened, there were two, uh, board seats that ended on December 31st. Those seats were for six-year terms. There was another board seat that was held by Trustee Nasser that ended as soon as the election was certified. So what occurred was the, um, Trustee Thorpe ran for the six-year term, which was his seat that was expiring, so he just ran for reelection. Trustee Lane chose to run for the remainder of the term that expired when Trustee Nasser's, uh, term expired when the election was certified. So in a sen- in sense, it was actually a two-years, were left on that term, so it was a two-year term that Trustee Lane ran for. Since Trustee Lane's seat that she currently held was a six-year term that expired December 31st, that left an opening, and that seat was won by Roxanne McDonald, who will begin January 1st. So what transpired, uh, next is the part that gets a little confusing. So once the election was certified, which was about two weeks after the election, Trustee Na- uh, S- Nasser was no longer a member of the Board of Education. That's when her term officially ended. Trustee Lane, who had won the remainder of that seat in the November election, the two-year election, had 10 days to accept the remainder of that two-year term. Trustee Lane came in on December 4th and accept, officially accepted that term, and proper documentation and paperwork was filed with the county clerk, which is how the proper protocol would go. At that time, Trustee Lane now became member of the Board of Education again, but filling the two-year term. She immediately began to fill that vacancy. So what this did, though, in order for her to fill that two-year term, she had to resign from her current position, which ends on December 31st. This left a vacancy on the board beginning December 4th and ending December 31st, because Roxanne McDonald will take that seat on January 1st. According to state law and according to your own bylaws in, uh, in the board's bylaws, it was necessary for the Board of Education to post that position. That was the reason for the press release that went out, and that was all, that was posted in local media. So right now, the board is accepting, uh, anybody who is interested, accepting applications up until December 14th at 4:00 PM. At that point in time, the board will then have that, uh, the privilege or the opportunity to review those applications that may come in. It will be the board's prerogative, then, to decide whether to fill that position or not. Now, here's where it gets, the part that gets, uh, a little confusing, is that 30 days from when Trustee Lane resigned, December 4th, 30 days later would be January 3rd. Trustee McDonald takes the seat on January 1st. So technically, you would not have to fill that, because the 30 days does not expire. You will still have time left before the new trustee takes the office. That's where we're at. That's the whole process. I hope I walked through that step by step and slow enough, so that we didn't get too lost and confused. Again, this is a little bit rare, a little bit different, because we had, uh, a board trustee who had stepped down, and then their position was filled. And again, according to bylaws and state law, that position only remains open until that election is certified. Okay?
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
So I would, uh, ask that we observe a moment of silence. We had a student, Hassanine, uh, who passed away, um, from Edsel Ford. I, I did attend a memorial that was at the school. We also had the passing of Don Eunice, who one of our schools is named after, and, uh, I visited the funeral to pay my respects, um, behalf of the district. And I also feel I need to mention, we had the passing of a president, George H.W. Bush, and so I'd like us to observe a moment of silence for those three individuals and their families. Thank you.
Next item, please. Is there something?
President Meade, yes. Before we go on, may I make, uh, just some quick remarks about, uh, the passing of Mr. Don Eunice?
Sure.
I was on the board when, as a matter of fact, I was board president, when, uh, we voted to name Eunice Middle School after Don Eunice. And, uh, I'd, I'd just like to say, it was one of the most difficult times that I was on the board. There had been a committee set up, and, uh, the procedure moved regularly, uh, and the committee came forward with Don Eunice's name, and, uh, there was some controversy on the, among the board members about who should, who the school should be named after. There were, there were several buildings that were being named. The Michael Berry Center was named, Salina Intermediate School was named then, uh, there was, there was the elementary school, and then there was the middle school. And the committee voted for Don Eunice, uh, and, and people thought different things on the board. It was, it was a really, really charged time, um, uh, and initially, the board kind of deadlocked about what to do, uh, because some people said, "Well, who's Don Eunice?" He was a fire captain, yeah, but he wasn't a political leader. He was a community activist. Some people disagreed with him, because he was, uh, he was a very outspoken person, but a person who, who lived every minute of his life in, in real passion. And he spoke up for particularly the Arab-American community, but for the Dearborn community. And, and I can't even begin to explain how much courage it took to do that. Uh, I, I've heard stories. I was at some meetings when he spoke up. Uh, one time, he was at a meeting when there was someone who was in the US Senate, a very high-powered person, ex-military person, so someone who was very intimidating, who had come on the, at the wishes of, I believe it was President Bush, and I think it was H.W. Bush. But in any case, uh, Don Eunice spoke out, and everyone else, I mean, the senator was using some language that, uh, he objected to, and, and out of the entire hall, Don Eunice was the one person who stood up and said, "Don't use those words." And, and he just, like, the whole place came to attention. That's the kind of person he was. He started out at, at, in a very humble beginning. He was an immigrant family. I don't think his, his father worked at Ford Motor and was an absolutely honest, upright person, found Henry Ford's wallet and returned it without a cent being taken, and Henry Ford said to his people, "This guy always has a job with me." So that's the type of family background, but they were humble people. And Don, uh, Eunice then enlisted in the US Army. He became a Dearborn firefighter and rose to the rank of captain. In, in the wake of 9/11, when we all understood the importance of our first responders, that committee said, "Person like Don Eunice, who doesn't get a lot of, of accolades, deserves some accolades." The other reason they voted to name the school after Don Eunice was that he had founded many social service agents, or he had been active in many, and was a founder of access, which has become an institution in our community. Uh, so the committee decided, and there might be, there was one member of the committee who was here earlier, uh, so they voted to, to name the school after Don Eunice. There was controversy, and then there was a compromise afterwards, and it was decided that, uh, Don Eunice's name would be on the middle school, and Lucille McCullough's name would be on the elementary school. It was a compromise. It was a great example of people coming together and honoring two people instead of one. Lucille McCullough was an advocate for special education. Don Eunice was a community activist. So it was a really great moment, but it was very difficult, and Don Eunice sat in this room, I can see him now, sitting with his family in the, in the front row, uh, and it was a very difficult time, uh, because everyone, some of us thought it was going to go through no problem, and then there was, there was controversy. Uh, but he had such a presence and such dignity, uh, everyone learned from that example, here is a person of real value. So it, it went ahead, and his passing is really mourned by a lot of people, so I, I don't want the occasion to pass without saying something about him, so...
Thank you very much. I do have a question. Uh, what was the role of Ish Ahmed with Don Eunice in, in access?
Uh, Ish was the executive director. Don Eunice was a founder. Trustee Barry, of course, has been on the board also, and Don was a board member.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. Anything else? Okay.
Yeah, I still have some agenda items. Retirement, um, wanna, we just have one, uh, this month, Marilyn Harris, 30 years of service, if we can show our appreciation to her for her... I will also want to mention that Pam Miller, who's on this as a recommendation for the Director of Payroll, um, she won't be able to attend tonight, but I'll bring her back to another board meeting, because she has a, at her current job, um, she has a board meeting tonight, so...
Okay.
Um, she'll be starting in the next month, pending board approval. And then the last thing I just want to mention for agenda items is that the Infrastructure Committee report and the potential that the board had approved for us to move forward, looking at a possible bond, since there is a action item tonight with moving on the owner's operator, uh, through Mr. Wall, and so that continues to move forward, and we just want to keep that on the agenda, so that people know that, um, you know, we are moving forward at the direction of the board, um, last month, and the work that we've been doing, really, on this for almost two years. And that's it for agenda items.
Non-agenda items?
So I want to congratulate, uh, four schools. Um, we always look at it when a school suffers some pain, we all stay together, and Dearborn Schools are one family, and when we have success, it really belongs to the, to the district. And so we had the, uh, privilege and the honor of four schools that were, um, finalists of eight across the state for the Title I Distinguished School Award.
Super.
Uh, Salina Intermediate, Maples, Stout, and McDonald. We actually thought we were gonna get, they only give out two in the state, and it'll be a national recognition, and so Maples was, did receive. They all received honorable mention, but Maples is going to receive the award in February. Shannon Peterson and Rose Aldebaly will be going with, uh, Ms. Jakubic to the, uh, ceremony, um, in, in February, and we'll have them, all four of them will have them before the board, hopefully in the February board, board meeting. So congratulations to all of them. I also want to mention Rose Aldebaly was given a, um, she was given a positive for, excuse me, the Michigan Department of Education, uh, gave her a shout-out at the conference for the work done on the Title I audit. Very intensive, and they weren't auditing us because there was something wrong, it was something the federal government wanted. They were really auditing the state, and it worked out really positive, and so they, I actually saw the idiot, uh, the video, excuse me, where they gave her an honorable mention on behalf of our district, so I know she works hard in the entire department, so I wanted to mention, uh, her, um, tonight, and she would've been part of our EL presentation later in the, in the day, or later in the, um, agenda, but she actually had a medical procedure, she gave me permission I could say it, um, that she is off work right now. So we wish her all the best for a speedy, uh, recovery. I also want to mention Whitmore Bowls, and I know there's a lot of positive things going on in the community this time of year with the holidays, whether it be Rotary, donating, exchange, all, school, schools are getting involved, we had the Battle for Hunger. So they sent me a video, and they challenged us to, uh, help those in need with mittens, and so we're starting a mitten drive here, uh, to support Whitmore Bowls, and I sent it out to, to the board and to the, uh, general administrators, and we have a box, so if people want to donate, uh, mittens, I actually, my son and I went over the weekend and picked up some, and I just put them in the box. So we're up for the challenge at Whitmore, we, we're there, and we're gonna support you students. I can't say no to the students, but again, they're doing it to help, uh, individuals in need. And, uh, water hydration and filtering, that continues to move forward. Um, it's been on the, um, it's been on the agenda, we discussed it before, it's been very positive, and we continue to move forward with that. Wanted to mention, too, Reed by 3rd Grade, I know the board had asked for a little bit of that information on that. Uh, I've asked Dr. Chokol to put together a task force to look at the implementation of that, and so more information will be forthcoming. I know she's put information in board briefs, not gonna have her come up today, but we will have her come up at a future meeting. And I am going to ask Masamoli Bazey to briefly come up and just mention, the board had also asked about updates with transportation hiring, so I'll have her come up and just say, make a few comments.
Good evening, trustees. Since last month, the bus driver, uh, we've added, bus, bus drivers needed ads on all the school marquees, the electronic marquees. Um, first spell also includes a monthly ad. Um, the E3 publication will begin including an ad for bus drivers, um, as well as a few other positions, but since this is a transportation update, I'll talk about bus drivers. Um, I personally posted several social media posts on a variety of sites, uh, social media pages for Dearborn citizens and, um, other local cities as well, and we received some, some response from that post. Uh, we've submitted an ad to air on Channel 4 and Channel 7, and it's actually free. It's on their job, they have like a job segment, and, um, thank you to Ruth Binkett for handling that. We also have an upcoming meeting scheduled with EG Work Solutions, and the meeting is, is postponed till later this month. It was supposed to have already happened, and then they needed to postpone, but we're hoping to find something that works for both of us as far as recruiting bus drivers. Um, so I'll have more information on that next month. And then Trustee Hamud, at one time, had asked me about training. Isn't there something we can do to train our own bus drivers? So I'm really happy to say that we do already have a training program in place, and that we hire, um, people that are interested, that have a clean driving record, a clean criminal record, and we hire them as bus attendants while we are training them, and they are preparing for their CDL test, the Commercial Driver's License Test that they have to take. So they're working as an attendant, we're helping prepare them for that test, then they take the test. Once they pass the test, then we can hire them as a substitute driver, and before we let them drive on their own, they're paired up with a current, permanent bus driver, they get some more experience that way, and then, um, they're ready to go as a, as a sub, or when a vacancy is available, then they can apply for that position as well. So I'm happy to say, and the total cost for new drivers to, to get through this training and to become, um, an applicant is $50, and other than that, we pay for everything else. That's for their fingerprints, that's for their, um, the test, the CDL test that they have to take, and the three endorsements as well that's required. And we pay for everything else. If they go to our, our physician, we also pay for the medical, uh, physical that's required.
Since we are covering some of the costs, do we have a requirement, then, that they don't leave us as soon as they get certified and are ready to get on the road, so that we don't lose them to another district?
I really don't know, but I will find out.
I just want to make sure if we're gonna invest something into it, that we at least get a commitment for, you know, a certain length of time.
I can say this, that we did just increase the salary for that classification, along with several other DFSC non-instructional positions, and in that process and our bargaining with DFSC, we researched to find out what other districts were paying their bus drivers, and we are very competitive. Um, our bus drivers start at $16, $16.09, and, and there's steps each year, and it can go up to $22. So as far as the salary goes, uh, we are competitive, and so hopefully that will contribute to some of the retention. But Trustee Petrikoff, I will look into that and find out if we have anything specific that we have an agreement with them.
And/or at least just see if, if it's a problem, if it's not, you know...
Right. Is it even a problem?
Right.
So I will look into that.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the last thing I have is just to wish everyone, uh, the board, everyone in the audience, the families, a wonderful holiday season, uh, Christmas, New Year, whatever it is that you're celebrating. I hope you enjoy your time with your family and friends, and hope you can stay away from the colds that I just seem to have picked up. Uh, so don't, sharing is great over the holidays, but just not the sickness. So anyway, I do, uh, I know everyone works hard, and it's a long year, so, uh, enjoy the time with your family and friends, and it is a nice time that, you know, we're shut down for seven days at the district office, so it gives everyone kind of a little break, and, uh, we get away and, and spend that quality time.
Recuperate.
Yeah, recuperate, so, thank you. That's it.
Next item, please.
Recognition acknowledgements. First item is recognizing Trustee Nasser.
So we'll, I'll just make a mention that we had, um, a reception before, uh, Trustee Nasser and her family were here, um, the board, uh, was here, we took some pictures, and we, uh, recognized her for her work over the last, I think, a year and a half plus, um, on the school board, and so we just want to thank her for her service and her dedication, and it was a nice, uh, reception, and we appreciate all the board trustees who were there to honor her, along with, uh, family and friends that showed up, um, and so we like to do that, and we did present her with an award, and I know President Cavalluna also mates, uh, said some words, uh, in thanking her for her service.
Musical performance at So Ford Ensemble?
Ms. Meyer is gonna come up. Every year, we look forward to this.
Um, what a delight it is to bring a little bit of holiday cheer with an ensemble from Edsel Ford High School, under, under the direction of Robert Doyle. Mr. Doyle has been teaching in Dearborn for 18 years, and has been at Edsel for the past 13 years. Tonight, they are performing two pieces for us, Silent Night by Franz Gruber and Caroling Caroling by Alfred Burt. Alfred Burt actually lived in the greater Detroit area and had a tradition of writing Christmas carols and printing out Christmas cards with the carol on it. These would be mailed to his friends and his family, and this tradition went on for many, many years. These carols were eventually put in a collection that we now refer to as the Burt Carols. A little side note, when I was a teenager, um, I'll let you decide how long ago that was, my grandmother came over and brought an old Christmas card with her, and the Christmas card had a song printed on it. She, um, she had borrowed it from a friend who had it as a family keepsake, and she knew that she was coming over, and she wanted to know if I would play, um, play the song and sing it for her, so that she would know what it sounds like. I don't remember the song, I don't know who the composer was, but I kind of would like to think that it was an Alfred Burt Carol Christmas card that I was able to perform for my grandmother. Well, um, let's enjoy a modern and traditional holiday song performed by our students from Edsel Ford High School, under the direction of Robert Doyle.
(applause) Caroling, caroling, now we go, Christmas bells are ringing. Caroling, caroling through the snow, Christmas bells are ringing. Joyous voices sweet and clear, sing the sad of heart to cheer. Ding dong, ding dong, Christmas bells are ringing. Caroling, caroling here and far, Christmas bells are ringing. Following, following yonder star, Christmas bells are ringing. Sing with all this happy morn, love, the King of Heaven's born. Ding dong, ding dong, Christmas bells are ringing.
We could just, uh, thank you so much for inviting us to come and, and be part of your holiday season as we prepare. Um, just very quickly, we wanted to recognize our students, just quickly, um, tell us your name.
Um, my name is Miranda Manzuski. I'm a junior, and I'd like to thank Ms. Meyer for being my music teacher in elementary school.
My name's Nora Hinton, and I'm also a junior, and I would also like to thank Ms. Meyer for being my teacher in elementary school, and also, um, Jim Walters and Ms. Pagowski.
My name is Michael Cannon from Edsel Ford, and I'm a sophomore, and I didn't have a student or I didn't have a music teacher, but I would like to thank you for my friends being their teacher.
I'm Nathan Wall. I'm a senior at Edsel Ford High School, and I'd like to thank now-retired Ms. Kaelis and also now-retired Mr. Shea.
I'm Oscar Vaskis, and, uh, I'm a senior also, and I would also like to thank Mr. Shea for being my music teacher.
I'm Dakota McFarland, and I would like to thank Jim Walters for being my, um, elementary school music teacher.
I'm Helena Salia, and I would like to thank Ms. Kaelis and Mr. Shea as my teachers.
My name is Abby Pitts, and I've never really taken, um, music before this, I'm in my sophomore year, so I'd like to thank Mr. Doyle.
We could just, thank you so much for inviting us to come and, and be part of your holiday season as we prepare. Just very quickly, we wanted to recognize our students, just quickly, tell us your name.
My name is Miranda Manzuski, I'm a junior, and I'd like to thank Ms. Meyer for being my music teacher in elementary school.
My name's Nora Heaton, and I'm also a junior, and I would also like to thank Ms. Meyer for being my teacher in elementary school, and also Jim Walters and Ms. Pagowski.
My name is Michael Cannon from Edsel Ford, and I'm a sophomore. I didn't have a student or I didn't have a music teacher, but I would like to thank you for my friends being their teacher.
I'm Nathan Wall, I'm a senior at Edsel Ford High School, and I'd like to thank now-retired Ms. Kaelis and also now-retired Mr. Shea.
I'm Oscar Vasquez, and I'm a senior also, and I would also like to thank Mr. Shea for being my music teacher.
I'm Dakota McFarland, and I would like to thank Jim Walters for being my elementary school music teacher.
I'm Helena Salia, and I would like to thank Ms. Kaelis and Mr. Shea as my teachers.
My name is Abby Pitts, and I've never really taken music before this, I'm in my sophomore year, so I'd like to thank Mr. Doyle.
This year is a banner year amongst musicians. One of the best-known and beloved carols, Silent Night, is celebrating its bicentennial, two hundred years. So, a little backstory on that carol that we have, have used for so many years. In eighteen eighteen, a roving band of actors was performing in towns throughout the Austrian Alps. On December twenty-third, they arrived at Oberndorf, a village near Salzburg, where they were to reenact the story of the Christ's birth in the small church of Saint Nicholas.
Unfortunately, the Saint Nicholas Church organ wasn't working and would not be repaired before Christmas. Because the church organ was out of commission, the actors presented their Christmas drama in a private home. That Christmas presentation put Assistant Pastor Joseph Moore in a meditative mood. Instead of walking straight to his house that night, Moore took the longer way home. The longer path took him up over a hill overlooking the village.
From that hilltop, Moore looked down on the peaceful, snow-covered village. Reveling his majestic silence to the wintry night, Moore gazed down at the glowing scene. His thoughts about the Christmas play he had just seen made him remember a poem he had written a couple of years before. That poem was about the night when angels announced the birth of a long-awaited Messiah to shepherds on the hillside.
Moore decided those words might make a good carol for his congregation the following evening at their Christmas Eve service. So the next day, Moore went to see the church organist, friends Gruber. Gruber only had a few hours to come up with a melody which could be sung with a guitar. Gruber succeeded, and they now had a Christmas carol that could be sung without an organ.
On Christmas Eve, the Little Oremendorf congregation heard Gruber and Moore sing their new composition to the accompaniment of Gruber's guitar. Originally sung in German, two hundred years later, the words of Silent Night are sung in more than three hundred different languages around the world.
Steal a knot, I league a knot. All is lift, I am some part. No does trout a hawk, I league a par. Hold a knaba im lo kiganha. Slavin himli sharu. Slavin himli sharu.
Silent night, holy night. All is calm, all is bright. Love, God, virgin, mother and child. Holy infants are tender and mild. Silent night, holy night. Heaven's best, son's sight. Holy shit, I'm never alive. Holy shit, hallelujah. Eyes the Savior is born. Eyes the Savior is born. Silent night, holy night. Sun of light, through night. Radiant beams of light, holy face. With the dawn of redeeming grace. Jesus, Lord of thy birth. Jesus, Lord of thy birth.
Thank you very much. Again, a happy holiday season to all, and on a completely shameless plug, we will be leaving now and attending our fundraiser at On the Border to benefit the Performing Arts Department. And if you came and joined us, I'm sure we would begin the holiday season very early. Happy holidays to all.
Mr. Doyle, students from Edsel Ford, thank you so much.
How late is the fundraiser?
Till it closes.
Till it closes.
I do, I do not know for sure.
We will have flyers there for you.
Next item, please. Commendations, we have two students from Henry Ford College. First one is Kareem Turfa, and the second one is Yasmeen Barry.
So for high school, congratulations to varsity athletes at Fortson and Dearborn High who achieved scholar athlete status in Kensington Lakes Activity Association. These students, eighty at Fortson and seventy, and seventy-three at Dearborn High, maintained a three point two five or better cumulative GPA.
Congratulations as well to the seventy-seven Downriver League Scholar Athletes at Edsel Ford High School. These varsity athletes maintain a cumulative three point three or higher GPA. Thank you to all the teachers and coaches who helped these student athletes to these lofty goals.
Commendations to the Edsel Ford girls' swim team for being the fall recipient of the principal's award for the highest team GPA. They had, they had a three point eight six GPA.
Congratulations to the Edsel Ford singers who competed in the Michigan School Vocal Music Association Musical Theater Solo and Ensemble Competition on November tenth. For solos, Elizabeth Dix, Nate Herman, and Oscar Vasquez earned one rating, while two ratings were given to Katherine Dix and Nathan Wall. Katherine and Elizabeth Dix earned a two rating for their duet. Maya Moreau, Oscar Vasquez, and Nathan Wall received one for their trio.
Congratulations to all, and special thanks to Dr. Sean Jackman, who served as a, as accompanist for the students.
Congratulations to Edsel Ford girls' volleyball team for winning the two, twenty-eighteen district championship, the first district title for the team in twenty-five years. Special thanks to Coach Caitlin Ball for her leadership.
Congratulations to Fortson Varsity Head Football Coach Fuad Zabban, who was selected as one of only five Regional Coaches of the Year in, in Region Twelve. The Michigan High School Football Coaches Association will honor, will honor Coach Zabban at his clinic in January. In addition, the award will place Coach Zabban on Division One State Coach of the Year ballot.
Commendations to the Ford's Women's, Fortson's Women's Ensemble for their continuing efforts as musical ambassadors for the district. On November fourteenth, a few ensemble members traveled to Eastern Michigan University to begin a four-month collaboration with their women's ensemble culminating with a performance at the Arab American National Museum in March. In addition, on November nineteenth, the group performed at the seventy-fifth anniversary of the Independence of Lebanon for Mrs. Suzanne Musi Yassin, the Council General of Lebanon and other dignitaries.
Commendations to the Fortson Chamber Choir for the performance of the Chelsea High School Choir and the Chelsea, Chelsea Chamber Orchestra on December second. The performance marked the halfway point of the group, point of the group's five-month cultural exchange program with Chelsea High School.
Commendations to the Dearborn Center for Math, Science, and Technology Students who won the Congressional App Challenge for the U.S. Representative Debbie Dingell's District. Students Hussein Cheeto, Mustafa Sobhi, Maryam Giratli, and Adam DeBach earned an app, The Dungeon of Operation, to help elementary students practice math skills by battling monsters. The adaptive program focuses on subtraction practice, but could be easily rewritten for any type of math operation.
For elementary schools, commendations to Veronica Cubitz and Mahataher, teachers in the Great Star Readiness Program. These two teachers are part of the incredible JSRP team, and recently received a full compliment, very complimentary letter from a parent. JSRP serves more than four hundred sixty preschoolers and plays a fundamental role in the overall success of students as they move into elementary school.
Commendations to Becker Elementary Students Salih Salih and Zaid Alhamdi, who found five hundred dollars as they were walking to school. The students knocked at the home to see if someone there had lost the money, but no one answered. They then brought the money to the school and turned it into the office. The boys will be treated to a special lunch with the principal for their honesty and integrity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me ask you something. You're in the Early College?
Yes.
At Henry Ford College?
Yep.
You also attached to a high school?
Uh, no, we actually are a full-running high school within the college.
Okay, so you're going to graduate from high school though, and also graduate from the college.
Yeah, by the end of the program, we'll have accumulated sixty college credits that we can transfer to a college we prefer.
Well, you're both very articulate. I think you're going to do just well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Kareem, don't go too far. I asked Kareem if I can put him on the spot for a second. Can you tell the board, as a junior, how many credit hours are you going to finish up with this year?
Twenty-three in total.
So the follow-up question is, how many are you going to pick up next year? He says twenty to thirty a semester, so you can actually walk away with a college associate's degree, high school diploma, and over eighty credit hours to take on whatever college or university you choose to go to. So congratulations to you. That's just proof of all the great work happening at Henry Ford Early College and the great job that Mr. Major Fadoul has done. Congratulations to both of you.
Also a great benefit to, to your families that
Yes.
don't have to pay for those credit hours at, at university, so I'm sure your parents really love it.
You know, I wanted to add, sorry, I wanted to add that also with paying for the college classes, they're also paying for the books that we need, and you know, this can also be thousands of dollars that we're saving through this program.
Oh yes, those of us that had kids that went through, we know it very well. So yeah, thank you. I'm sure your parents would be thanking you, they should be.
Thank you.
Quick comment to Yasmeen, I, I also loved your presentation. You can see how articulate she was. I truly enjoyed, even as she was reading, it was like, does Yasmeen want to be a news reporter, or maybe a lawyer? You guys both did a great job, and congratulations, and congratulations to your awesome principal who always brings forward amazing students. We're very proud of you and your program, so congrats.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Lane?
Dr. Mead, before we move from the commendations, shouldn't we also commend Dr. Maleko on his latest accolade? He's, and I, and I bring this up, I mean, I'm getting kind of tired of all of the things that he's winning, but...
It's not me, it's us as a team.
Yes, I know it is. And it is great, but I, I would like to mention it because I think it underscores the importance of education to business, to economics. So having well-educated citizens is, is a plus for our economy. Our economy, although there are always going to be people doing manual labor, doing factory work, gardening, so many other manual work or, or different types of work, our economy is so much now information, knowledge, and service, so education just can't be more important. And I'm glad that the business community recognizes that and has given you the Business Leader of the Year, so I appreciate that very much. Well, if you want to take on to that, quite frankly, what we hear over and over again, especially from the business community, is that they need, even in skilled trades, they need the, the basis of, of the educated employee. So they know that the work that we do here at the P-12 and also at Henry Ford College is what they require in order to get their employees
Their employees.
ready for the workforce. And so we, we do, we are a direct pipeline for that opportunity. So it, it doesn't matter whether you're, you're turning a wrench in a, you know, garage or working at, in a doctor's office. You, you need all those skill sets, and that starts with the P-12 system.
I'd just say thank you, and I appreciate the partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, and it's a great group, and learned about it at the end of last week. And again, it belongs to the district, to the board, to the whole team, it really is. It's a teamwork, and so I thank you. Another positive for our district and our students, our students are benefiting ultimately.
It is teamwork, but it demands leadership. So thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also wanted to add something under commendations. We're always recognizing our football players and our wrestlers and baseball teams. We also have a great program with the robotics at the elementary and the middle school.
Yes.
On December second, a couple of weeks ago, my son and I were supposed to get, my twenty-four-year-old son and I were supposed to get together for breakfast, he was running late, so we went to early lunch. So I dragged him with me to competition in Allen Park, where Gear Park, McCullough, Maples, and Howard represented us very well. Then right after, I told my sons, like, "Take me home, take me home." I told them, "I'm going to Dearborn Heights," because that's where the middle schools were. The middle schools were Woodworth, Eunice, Salina, Bryant, and STEM. He actually enjoyed watching what these students were doing. He looked at them, and he says, "Was this around when I was at this age?" I said, "Unfortunately, no, or you would have been in it." Yeah, they, I mean, all the schools represented us very well. I'm going to, I'm going to volunteer, Mr. Fahad. Hopefully next year, we can have like a mega competition in Dearborn. I know we had a small one at Eunice before, and I spoke to Tim earlier, and he told me some of the problems would be the power, but if at the high school level, I think we can pull it off, so. I just volunteered you, Mr. Shadi Fahad, to take on.
Watching it.
No, I actually spoke to him a little bit, I said, "We should do this," and he was all for it. Everybody, I mean, kids were having a phenomenal, and you know what, I'm not going to mention what schools did well, they all did very well. Some of our schools were recognized at these competitions, so congratulations to them.
Anybody else? Next item, please.
Acknowledgement of donations?
Ms. Ali Bazey will come up.
The following donations have been offered to the, to the school district. Acceptance of this donation is these donations are requested at this time. A donation of four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety cents has been offered to Henry Ford Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for a cafe gym wireless microphone. A donation of two hundred dollars has been offered to Nowland Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for shelving and seating for autistic classrooms. A donation of six hundred dollars has been offered to Whitmore Bowls Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for bowling ramps for students with disabilities. A donation of eighty-five dollars has been offered to Gear Park Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for stretchy, for a stretchy band to be used for music. A donation of a hundred and sixty-two dollars has been offered to Hague Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for registration for the History Center during the Lansing trip. A donation of two hundred dollars has been offered to Bryant Middle School by the Dearborn Education to be used for flexible seating. A donation of two thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars has been offered to Whitmore Bowl School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for an interactive whiteboard. A donation of one thousand dollars has been offered to Edsel Ford High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for flexible library seating. A donation of two hundred and ninety-nine dollars has been offered to Miller Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for speech buddies. A donation of three hundred dollars has been offered to Hague Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for a second-step fifth-grade classroom kits, second-step fifth-grade classroom kits. A donation of twenty-five thousand has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for next-generation learning, also known as NGL. A donation of a nineteen seventy-eight four fifty-four big block Chevrolet marine engine has been offered to Fortson High School by Mr. Roger Balthori to be used in the Fortson Auto Shop as a learning tool for students. A donation of a nineteen sixty-eight three twenty-seven small black Chevrolet engine has been offered to the Fortson High School, has been offered to Fortson High School by Mr. Don Thurling to be used in the Fortson Auto Shop as a learning tool for students. A donation of two thousand dollars has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by Mr. Samir Harabi to be used for an electronic marquee. A donation of one thousand dollars has been offered to Dearborn High School by Aaron Clausing and James Paco to be used for robotics. A donation of five hundred dollars has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by Michigan APALA to be used for positive behavior intervention, posit, PBIS. And the Michigan APALA stands for the Michigan Asian Pacific Islander Labor Alliance. A donation of one thousand dollars has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by UAW for Diversity and Inclusion to also be used for the Positive Behavior Program. A donation of two trumpets has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by Mrs. Virginia Blow to be used by students in the music program. A donation of five hundred and fifty-four dollars has been A donation of $554 has been offered to McDonald Elementary School by Robert and Carrie Castillo to be used to purchase two Scholastic Dollar Books each month for every student in Ms. Lauren Jacobs' classroom. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.